We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Okay, now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we get roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Here.
Commissioner Claussen?
Here.
Commissioner May? Commissioner O'Brien?
Here.
Commissioner Rourke?
Here.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Here.
City Manager Reeves?
Here.
And can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner May?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. For approval of the agenda, and can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Okay, on to five for public comment. This is the time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the City Commission on any topic. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and be heard. No commissioner, department head, or city staff will respond. City Manager will follow up on the public comments as necessary. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Please direct all your comments to me as the meeting chairperson. Please refrain from the use of profanity, and please do not direct any comments towards any members of the public. And do we have anybody who would like to speak tonight? Oh, Mr. Ross, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm probably a completely unfamiliar face to you, so I'll go ahead and introduce myself. My name's Brian Ross, and I am the present president of the Historical Society of Marine City. And I'm here, as were a few members prior to me, in meetings prior to this one, here to just let you know what the Historical Society is up to these days. So, we have, we are a local organization that works to promote history and historical preservation within the city. We have a particular interest in the 300 Broadway Building, or the Historic City Hall, as it's also known. And we work also to raise money to give grants to local families, or homes, or businesses, or even public institutions that may be interested in beautifying their spaces, or homes, or dwellings. So, we offer a program called Paint the Town, which is a $1,500 matching grant to paint your house, or beautify your home. We've, this year, extended the number of grantees from three to four, so a total of $6,000 that we're investing in the city to do that. We have a, one of the ways that we raise member, raise money for doing such things is through a raffle. And we have a raffle for a flight with Jimmy Cotrell, who a lot of you have seen flying over town, I'm sure. We recently participated in Maritime Days, thanks to Sarah Polio. We had a booth there and were able to tell people about what we are and what we do. And many thanks to Sarah Polio for affording us that opportunity. We recently donated something called the Edmund Fitzgerald Swim, which will be coming through this part of the river. It's a swim to commemorate what would have been the last leg of Edmund Fitzgerald Ship's trip down to deliver taconite to the city of Detroit. So, this will happen via swimmers, who will actually start in the Lake Superior, swim its course. Sadly, they can't swim through the sewer locks, which is actually probably a good thing. But nonetheless, they will actually swim in relay fashion down through this. And actually, they are looking for, if anybody is able, a, like tug-style boat that might be able to support them throughout this. They had one, it had mechanical difficulties, and they're looking for one to take its place. We recently teamed up with Dan Moore, who's been working in town to help clean up blighted homes and assist those who, maybe elderly, or on a fixed income, who might need help with repairing or rehabbing their home. We've assisted him by virtue of donating a dumpster to his cause, to help empty out houses, blighted areas, and property that may be in need of rehabilitation. We also recently covered, to the tune of, I think, about $2,300, maintenance and service on the fire suppression system in Old City Hall. So that's a burden that now is no longer on the city, you know, despite the city having some funds for building maintenance and the like. We want the city to know that we are, you know, interested in keeping that history alive and keeping it going. And then, another thing that we will be doing shortly is doing some replanting in Drake Park, and, you know, ask that the commission approve the plantings. I think we have a very good line of communication now with a few of our members and the city management. So, hopefully, the lines of communication are now open, and we can keep going on making this city both a beautiful place to live, beautifying it, and preserving its history. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Good to see you, Brian.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay, you're seeing that? We'll move on to six for approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of August 7, 2025?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Under the consent agenda, we have the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, Departmental Monthly Activity Reports, we have the business license for triple N auto sales, special event permit for the Maritime Days trunk-or-treat on Water Street, a special event permit for 10 years Automotive Sixth Annual Car Show. If I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, letters A through E.
Support.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Carry. Okay, we have the next item for items removed, we have none. And to nine, financial business, we have A expenditures, including payroll, in the amount of $1,030,148.45. Can I have a motion to approve those expenditures that includes the payroll in that amount of $1,030,148.45?
Make a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $1,030,148.45.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Carry. On to B for preliminary financial statements. I have a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements, ending July 31, 2025.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Under 10 for unfinished business, we have Resolution 21-2025, Notice of Intent for Revenue Bonds. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, under unfinished business, there's two resolutions, A to B. And as I had mentioned at the last meeting, we were looking at two options in order to complete the water main project repairs that stem out of that project, that are specifically for sanitary and storm issues. Just as a recap, everybody is quite aware that when we started the water project in Phase One and Two, we had a significant number of issues with our storm systems and our sanitary systems that were found, where we had multiple collapses of both systems, and we literally drained what funds we had available to pay for those before we could put the pavement back in, in those areas. We're expecting Phase Three, which is the area between the rivers and the downtown area, to be probably the worst of the three phases. It's the oldest infrastructure in the ground. We have stuff confirmed that's from 1937 in the ground, in those areas. And as of this point now, once we open up the street and do the excavation for the water main, if we find a collapsed sewer line, we'd have no funds available, or storm that's gone or missing or washed away, we'd have no funds available to do those repairs. As I've indicated in the past, under law, we are not allowed to just pave over a storm or a sanitary line that's no longer present. So, I originally talked to you about either the use of a revenue bond, or a capital improvement bond for this purpose, and we listed the engagement letter at $10 million. That was just to cover what we thought would be a number of different items that we should roll into this, this project. Part of those items, as we talked about, were the, at this point, unknown cost in terms of the saw work, the engineering work, the actual repair work for what we find, water meters, pipelining, with the issues I've talked about with INI at over 300%, and a number of urgent wastewater treatment plant CIP issues that are ever-present at this point. After we went through the bonds and had the engagement letter for $10 million, Katie and I, and then worked with Joe from Michigan Water, Rural Water Association, and took a closer look at scaling back the cost of these projects, and really limiting them to what we believe that we'll need in this process. The problem with using revenue bonds is that you can use them for sanitary work, but you can't use them for storm work. But with capital improvement bonds, you can use that for storm and sanitary work. We can use up to 10% of our SEV for capital improvement bonds. We didn't want to utilize all that percentage, up to $10 million, because then if something catastrophic happened at some other location, we have no flexibility to respond to that process with a capital improvement bond if it was needed. So as we worked through that with the treasurer and Joe, we decided to take the minimum amount, what we felt comfortable with in terms of addressing just the issues that arise out of the water treatment, excuse me, the water main project, meaning the sanitary and storm issues that arise that require repairs and additional work. And we chose to use the capital improvement bond at $3 million. And the issue tonight will be, and I've got some figures for you in terms of what a 15-year bond looks like, and what a 20-year bond looks like. We think that going forward, the best way to handle this, and we've done a lot of discussion on this, is to take care of the emergency repairs that were mandated to make as we open the ground up, and then, as we get through that process, drill down into the other items that are emergent as well, meaning the pipelining, which we know we have a significant issue with, the water meters that are eight to 12 years past due in terms of life, and the wastewater treatment plant issues, and then start the process for USDA rule development loan, which we can do at 2% over 40 years versus the higher interest rates at what we're doing now, and get us a better rate, and then rule those programs into that loan note. Our concern is when we looked at those numbers at the $6 million mark, on top of what we have coming in terms of studying water sewer rates, we felt it was just too drastic of an impact upon our residents, so we should scale back and eat the elephant in a few more bites as we go through this process. And yes, it'll extend it much longer, but I think it's more palpable in that matter than trying to just handle the bull all at once with its horns and then taking the brunt of it. We feel that this may be a better solution. So, Resolution A was the notice for intent of revenue bonds, which I will ask at this point that we pass on. And then, Resolution B would be the intent for capital improvement bonds for an amount, and I would ask that to be for $3 million. Involved in this process, if I can, I provided you with a sheet that came through the work of the Michigan Rural Water Association. Joe is here with us, and I ask you to look at the sheet I left on your desktop tonight. And if you would look at the top one, that was his capital improvement bond, loan options, multi-unit customer count. And if you look at the $3 million mark, almost right in the center of the page, you'll see a 15-year loan at 4.25%, and a 20-year loan at 4.50%. And then, if you look through the numbers there, if you go down, you'll see the different meter sizes, and we talked about meter equivalents in our training, and we talked about WWVA standards that we'd like to adopt in terms of industry standards, so there's science behind what we're trying to achieve and what we're trying to do. We feel that that $3 million, and here's the question, and I'll ask Katie and Joe to weigh in this, do we do it at 15 years, or do we do it at 20 years? And you can see the difference is approximately $5 per quarter, if I look at this right, Joe, in terms of a regular household meter, then if you get bigger in the meter sizes, the numbers obviously go up. I'd ask for Joe or Katie's input, if they'd want to comment on this at this time. Joe, did I butcher that, or did I come pretty close?
No, you did.
You did butcher it?
No. And yes, about a $5 difference. But, I mean, it's...
Sorry.
No, it's true.
It's like, the 20-year spreads the payments out more. Unfortunately, it's a higher interest rate, so, and I didn't put in this document, like, what the difference in the overall amount of money that we'd be spending. It was fairly significant.
Joe, can you come up to the podium, because we're...
Yeah.
Go, Brian.
Brian, if you want to see it, one of the charts.
All right. So we got about a $5 difference in the quarterly bill between the 15 and the 20-year, the 20-year being a smaller payment. But unfortunately, with the 20-year, you get a higher, a little bit higher interest rate. And, even though it's not much of an interest rate increase, on a $3 million loan, it added up to a fairly significant amount of money overall, like over the 15-year span versus the 20-year span. When you factor in repaying the loan and the interest payment, it was a pretty substantial dollar amount difference. But, the advantage to the 20-year is it's not quite as hard of a hit to the quarterly sewer bill, considering there's already some probably significant increases kind of on the horizon for the sewer bills as they are. So, that's why I put this kind of together, so you guys could actually kind of see the difference, depending on how much, you know, it was decided on to borrow, and then the differences on how they would affect, you know, everybody's three-quarter inch rate with the different loan amounts, whether it was 15-year, 20-year, whether it was capital bond, or revenue bond. Because there were different interest rates for all the four different options when it came to the different bonds, so...
Now, I will tell you, as I thought about this and talked to Joe, although there's not a lot of difference from my perspective at looking at this, and I kind of honed in on the fact that this has to be a process that's continual. Start today, you'll be back next year, three, five years, 10 years. Knowing that what we, what we're going to have to do in terms of water and sewer rates, expect for the ready-to-serve, it would be my recommendation that we use the $3 million at the 20-year rate, only because I just indicated to you, there are other bond options that I'm going to have to employ that may compound this. Now, spread over 40 years, big difference in a lower interest rate, but nevertheless, I know that in order to stabilize and try to retain that water plant in terms of what we're going to need, I don't want to put all that burden immediately, even if it's $5 a quarter, I'd rather spread it out, knowing that in the future, there's going to be some additional pushes to come yet. And I think whatever we can do to provide some assistance in terms of leveling that out, or not making such a quick uphill, and we kind of slowly rise and lay it out to the people, we'll have that at the Town Hall, we'll talk about it later on, I think that's probably the better choice, even though we'll pay a little bit more interest. This is a bond market here, so obviously, we're not getting the best rates that we would hope for. They're better than other rates you'd have to, if we went out into the world and tried to borrow money, but nevertheless, with other things happening, and knowing that we have to stay on a schedule, we're revisiting water and sewer rates in order to climb out of this dilemma we're in, that would be my recommendation.
If I may make a comment, too. So, this is for the public's interest, that doesn't have these charts and haven't gone as granular as we have in our trainings on this. With the two options in front of us, the capital improvement versus the revenue bond, the revenue bond options would be a larger hit to that monthly bill, the $3 million, than the capital improvement.
And it's not flexible, we couldn't use it for both.
Correct, yeah. So, I just wanted to call that out, that as we can see on these charts, we are going with the more affordable option for residents.
And these numbers are not, obviously, concrete, they're projections. We haven't done anything in terms of water and sewer rates, so to put that all together yet, until you explore those options that you wish to choose on water and sewer rates, then we'll be able to have something concise. As I talked about, that'll be at a Town Hall, and we'll be able to present that. The process of going through this, is when we bring this to you, we're going to lay this out over a number of years and a thought process. Now, this will have to, hopefully, transcend terms in office for people, or managers, or whatever, but it's a plan going forward where there hasn't been a plan in the past. The second piece of this is that, down the road, I think we owe it to our residents to work with our staff members internally, to look at a process or a policy adjustment that allows us to give as much weight as possible to our residents in assistance in getting used to these new rates as they go forward. So, it, my thought process is this is not a shut-off mindset first. It's a, let's employ all obvious resources we have to help people in terms of that, and we're going to work towards, I know the mayor's already dug up a resource card, and we're going to list a number of different agencies and those type of things, but I may ask you to come back and look at our policy and give it a temporary carryover in terms of how we accommodate changing these rates, until people can get used to it a little bit.
One question. In one line, it says, this is the cost per billing period, and then bottom again, it says it's the cost per month. So, is it per quarter or per month, this increase?
Per quarter. Sorry, that, I didn't catch that change that I need to make to the spreadsheet in the program.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure, because that makes a big, huge difference.
Oh, yes. No, I totally understand. No, that'd be, yeah, it's per quarter, not per month.
All right.
Part of that comes from, other communities do monthly bills rather than quarterly bills. And so, this was a bit of a, this is just more housekeeping back of house for the public. This was a shift, and as we looked at this, from how other communities were doing monthly to our quarterly bills, and making sure all the data was appropriate.
Yeah, it's...
Mike, does, will this money include doing the saw work?
So, we can reimburse ourselves out of this money.
Yep.
The problem is, I have to have an extremely tight schedule in order to meet the construction period for Phase Three. I've already authorized, we talked to Katie, we've started the saw process, we're expecting to finish it within 45 to 50 days. So we're going to utilize local street funds as much as possible, and then Katie's got some work to do in terms of utilizing some sewer money that's left, or comes in, we expect it to come in, or she'll split the bills up and apply so much via this, and so much via that, in order to start that process, but we could reimburse ourselves for that out of local streets.
What about the sewer and storm sewer inspections for the rest of the city?
That is not included in this number. If we have anything left over out of this $3 million from the repair process, we will invest it into the sanitary or storm issues. More than likely, though, as I indicated, you have significant issues at the wastewater treatment plant, we have buildings that are separating, we have the equipment issues of failure, we have, those things have to be rectified. There's about $2.1 million worth of stuff for immediate.
I mean, my only, at some point, I know fairly soon, hopefully, sorry to cave and speak tonight, that we do need to do that inspection for the rest of it, that way we know what we're looking at for downstream.
The thought process there would be, when we do the USDA loan at the 2%, to include that in, so we get a look at overall, where are we at, then have a plan forward for the city, here's your saw, this goes out the next 10 years, evaluate what mains we'll have to, and start fresh, not depend on what's been done in the past. That would be the plan forward.
Mike, ask additionally, we've talked a little bit about grant potentials, which are down the ways, we're out of cycle, it takes something like 16 months, 18 months before we'll be able to look at any of that. If we were to get a grant down the road, how does it interact with this? Does this preclude us from obtaining any grants if we do a...
No, it does not. This is a strict municipal bonding, we're going out to borrow money, it wouldn't impact any grants. We'll automatically reapply for next year's wastewater treatment plant grant that we were short on this year, our application has standing. The mayor and I met the other day with Representative DeBoyer in terms of asking for a direct budget allocation for our infrastructure issues. The only earmarked congressionally-directed funding source I have left is Senator Slocken. We haven't been kicked out of that process yet, so I'm still maintaining hope, but any of the other grants that are available at this point have been expired, or we've been determined not to be successful. But if they come along, we'll apply, and we'll keep applying. That's just the normal course, we apply as often as we can.
Thank you.
Other questions in regards to the recommendation for Resolution B, capital improvement bonds for $3 million, and it would be my recommendation at the 20-year, exercising the 20-year note instead of the 15-year note, unless somebody else has other ideas or options or suggestions, or...
Do we need to formally pass on Item A, the revenue bond, just as a process?
Yeah, so, somebody should make a motion to dismiss further discussion or action on A.
I'll make a motion to dismiss further discussion or action on 10A, the Resolution 021-2025, Notice of Intent for Revenue Bond.
Thank you.
Support.
If no further discussion, then roll call, please. Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Carry. Okay, then, under 10B, can I have a motion to approve that Resolution 22-2025, Notice of Intent declaring for capital improvement bonds for the $3 million at 20-year?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 022-2025, the Notice of Intent for a capital improvement bond at $3 million for 20-year term.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Carry.
Thank you.
See you, bud.
On to C for...
Brian, I'm sorry, may I get that back? Because that's not...
Sorry.
That's, oh, that's okay. I just want the numbers to go out there, and they be wrong. They're totally going to change. Yeah, thank you.
On to the interlocal agreement with China Township on water.
So, this has been long awaited, but we have proposed water and sewer agreement with China Township. Bobby, want to talk about that experience?
Yeah, we, I'm not going to give you the whole experience, but I had previously brought drafts of these to you, and you had voted unanimously to move forward with the thinking in the draft, so now we have those in place. They did assign their attorney to work on this with Mike and I. This involves the, well, I mean, 16?
15 persons.
15, 16? 15, 16 parcels where we supply water and we manage sewer. You have two agreements before you because the complexities of rounding them into one agreement was difficult. So, here's the long and short of it. You now have an agreement in front of you that they are going to act on at their next meeting concerning water provisioning. And you have an agreement that they've already approved concerning the sewer side of things that I'm asking you to approve this evening. I did arrange for you to get back all of the sewer monies that had been collected since they first started charging for those. That money's all gonna come back to us in the form of a payment shortly. That was something you had asked about. And we had said, "Well, we're not focused on the past right now. We're trying to get something going for the future." But I did secure a promise that those money would be all repaid to you in full. So, this is, these are the homes. You know, there's 15, 16 houses. We direct water. You're charging them in the same manner that you would charge them if they were in Marine City. Nothing more, nothing less. It's the same exact, they're paying their fair share and the same for sewer. So, we'd like to get these agreements behind us. As you know, over the years, many agreements on this issue have floated around this community and their community. But it really took their folks assigning an attorney to work on it. Who had some authority to work on it. Worked with Mike and I, we got it done. And they are now in approval phase and they agree with everything. And I think we're ready to approve as well.
Could you talk a little bit about the process if our rates within Marine City, what we charge Marine City residents?
They automatically go up for them.
And it sticks with them?
Yeah, there's a provision in there that says, essentially paraphrasing, you're subject to our current rates and any future adjustments to our rates.
I just wanted to put that out there, 'cause we had actually talked a little bit about this ahead as well. But with the public interest in this, understanding that these communities, we're actually all really in operating the system together, using the system together, all pulling our equal weights.
Yep. Anyways, I think you have to act on these probably individually. And like I said, the sewer, the sewer version, they approved at their last meeting. And the water they're taking up at their next meeting, you have both of them in front of you.
And then with that, can I get a motion to approve the agreement for the defined water distribution services with China Township as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Vannen Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Kiri.
Thank you. If any of you wanna ever hear the entire experience, give me a call.
And then moving on then to the next item, can I have a motion to approve the agreement for sewage disposal service with China Township as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Quick one, how long are these gonna be good for? Forever till?
Yeah, they're, you know, we put them, you know, I always?
We won't have to go through this again next year.
No, I always like to give you, you can get out, but they're, these are long 30-year deals.
Good, okay.
If no other discussion, then roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Vannen Bosch.
Yes.
Kiri.
On to the next item for the East China Water Consumption Agreement. And city manager, would you like to talk on that?
Yes, so, this East China Water Consumption Agreement is basically an intergovernmental agreement between us and East China. That East China will supply us water as we renovate our water plant. We expect this first process to start sometime on or about September 11th and to go for approximately a week the first time. And then the second time to occur in November. These are alternative based upon supply chains. We've already had it pushed back one already. There's a couple caveats that you should know. In a time of a fire in either community where there's a large request for water under a mutual aid or Good Neighbor Act, we would open our interconnect or they would open your connect and help supply water. This is a little bit different here. We're gonna be without water totally and they'll have to supply all our water, keep our tower at certain level, and also supply Cotterville with water. They have the capacity to do that. However, we'll be taking a substantial amount of water to them over a period of time. Two things are gonna occur there. One, they may incur some overtime hours by their water plant operators, which they estimate to be $20,000. I think their estimate is extremely high and I think I can understand the first few days until you get used to it and you're comfortable. But after that, I don't see any reason to, we wouldn't staff ours 24 hours a day, two weeks in advance, excuse me, to send them water. So, I think that will fluctuate a little bit and as they get comfortable, it'll go down. The second piece of this is we'll have to pay for all the water we consume, which is reasonable. We'll pay what their normal residential rate is for that. There's not a fund that this comes out of, per se. It doesn't come out of the water project. It's one of those costs that we've kind of found throughout this project that the city, there was no allowance made for the city's cost in this piece. So, when that comes to Katie, we'll have to figure that out, I guess, at this point and determine how we're gonna piece that up and the overtime hours, how we're going to do that. I don't have that answer, unless Katie, you have it right now?
I mean?
We gotta pay it, but we're just not sure where it's coming from yet.
The ready-to-serve water isn't getting touched because of the project, so it'll always go there. And we'll still be collecting water as if it was being used here. It's not like bills are gonna halt for that time, so.
But it's part of the process. In order to make the changes at the water plant, we have no other options. Very candidly, if something goes wrong under this agreement, they have authority to shut our water off. So, I'm working towards making sure that those things don't happen and that we have a success. We have had two testing runs and I think we've done okay on both those testing runs. So, I'm confident that as we move forward, this process will work well and we'll just end up paying for the water we consume, as will Cotterville.
And for the citizens and for this commission, the 2024 Water Quality Report for their water is an exhibit to the agreement and it is a very good report. So, the water quality that we will be receiving during these interim time periods is of good nature and good quality. They have a good 2024 water quality report result. This is an agreement that we, you know, we did the lion's work on because it was, you know, Mike and I viewed this as, you know, this is something we're kind of requesting of them. But they were very cooperative in helping us get this over the finish line. And the document you have in front of you, they agree with.
Two quick questions on this, and I think both are fairly easy to answer. One, will our citizens' residents see any changes on their water bill as we switch over to their end? And secondly, is there any change in service? I mean, is there gonna be a period where the water is down and off while it switches over? Anything like this that citizens should?
The citizens will see no difference in their water bills or anything. It'll be our normal water bill. We'll bill them accordingly for whatever they use. It's just where it's coming from. If there's a difference between what they charge and we charge, we'll be charging the rate that we charge. I will tell you, there is no planned for out-of-water notification. There is no plan at this time for low water pressure. Understand though, one event could change that. So, we have this process underway and we lose a 12-inch water main break. This last break we had, we lost 10 feet an hour in the tank. So, it can, we have to be very mindful of this process. I've asked the people that are working under the water plant renovation to make sure that we try to keep one pump in reserve at all times just in case we have to stop the process and fire it back up. There's a lot of work going on at the water plant right now in terms of the tanks and repairs and issues going on there. So, I think we're ready for it. We've done enough planning in that and then we'll have the ability to react. The chief's been involved in this process. I'm sure the fire department will have a plan in terms of staging tankers or anything he needs in order to draft out of the rivers if need be. So, we're ready to get it over with and move on to the next phase of the project.
We're also trying to make sure that the time period, these interim time periods are kept?
Tight.
Tight.
Well, we've had a agreement with them before.
Yes.
When they, when they relined the water towers.
Yes.
And we shut it down completely and the same with them. So, it's kind of the same.
And the history of that works out pretty well.
With that, can I have the motion then to approve the drinking water purchase and consumption agreement with East China Township as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Vannen Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Kiri.
On to new business, A for interim city manager discussion. So, finally, our city manager Reeves will be taking some much-deserved vacation time in the near future. During that time, we'd like him to enjoy his time and not have to worry about any contacts unless they're true emergencies. So, in order to do that and continue operations, and especially with the ongoing projects that we have, I would like to recommend that we have Scott Atkins be officially approved by the city commission to serve as interim city manager during the time that city manager Reeves is off on vacation. I think that his previous experience as former city manager, his continuing work as a projects administrator, and his familiarity with all of the departments and the employees here, I think will continue the efficiency and continuity of everything going on. But then additionally also, I believe we can recommend that he be designated as interim manager, not only during the short period of time that city manager Reeves is off on vacation, but then kind of have him designated if there's unexpected emergencies or for future vacations or days off that city manager needs to take. Then maybe we won't have notice of ahead of time or things to happen until further notice from city manager Reeves. I think that.
And he's on board with this. I know that Chief Haslop really wanted it. But no, I think Scott is on board and he can adjust his out-of-town time however we need it. And I think you're fairly comfortable with his style of management.
He's been here before, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we know that guy.
Yeah. So, then I would be looking at it in the form of a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Scott Atkins to be the interim city manager for any time periods where our current city manager, Mr. Reeves, is out of town or otherwise unavailable.
Support.
All right, any other discussion? Yeah, roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Vannen Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Kiri.
And then on to the next item, town hall meetings discussion.
Thank you. Just, we talked about as one of the city goals, communication with our residents. And we're well towards working towards achieving those goals. One, since the last meeting time, we now broadcast live to the residents. So, that provides additional communication capabilities. The residents will have to, they can watch it live, if you will. Another piece we talked about is info town halls on a variety of different subjects. So, we have two coming up. I think that would be interesting for the residents to come in and listen to. Katie had always talked to me about this because of the people that come into city hall is the first part of on September 23rd, 2025 at 6:30 here. And these chambers will be the water sewer. But how do you read your, how do you read your water bill? What does your water bill mean? What does it mean when we charge you a unit? What is a ready-to-serv? What is an admin charger? What, how do you read your water bill? How do you tell month-to-month and quarterly? And how's this work? Our staff does a great job in trying to explain people, but you'd be surprised at how many people are really confused by the water bill. The second piece of that town hall would be the assistance of the Michigan Rural Water Association. And it'll be a short feature on how are water and sewer rates constructed? How are they set? What's the science behind it? Bring out the coin and flip it to bring out the genie here? How is it done? What's the mechanics behind it so people have an understanding of what's the process that it's normally put into? Most people don't understand that there's a lot of different factors that go into setting water and sewer rates. And some of that information is candidly out of your control. And that they don't understand that when you don't make repairs in terms of infrastructure issues, all that affects a water and sewer rate or a water and sewer bill. And then what that bill and the parts of it are designated to pay for. And when those accounts or those areas of the bill are short, what happens? I think we're a case study for that type of thing. So, I think it'll help educate the citizens. We'll have staff available to answer questions. It'll be pretty much an informal basis, but that's the two sections of it, as I see it. All ears to hear if somebody'd like to tweak it or has another idea. But short and sweet, an explanation, a short PowerPoint or, you know, we won't go into the 68-page Excel spreadsheets or anything. But we'll keep it brief, but try to cover the basics so people have a basic understanding. And we've communicated that to the public. And then at upcoming meetings, when these things are discussed, people say, "Oh, yeah, I remember. They talked about this." And this is the science behind it. So, your thoughts on that one? And then the second one would be October 21st at 6:30, 300 Broadway Town Hall. Everybody wants to talk about 300 Broadway. Let's have a town hall discussion about 300 Broadway. The idea is to invite different groups, allow them to do a short presentation. So, bring in the historical society, bring in, and I understand if I'm told the right information, the Friends of City Hall have kind of collectively gone to the historical society. Then there's the Historical Commission. But whatever groups may have an interest in that, allow them a presentation time. Give them 15 minutes and allow them a presentation time. I may bring somebody back from pilot to update you. I may update you in terms of the things that I'm hearing and what I've been told. We'll talk about the building's current shape and some issues we're facing now, what we're gonna face going into winter. It'll basically be an update for the citizens to understand, because I still don't think it's clear in the community, the shape of the building and what it takes to put it into shape. What does that mean? And the second piece of it is, even if the money was available, what is it used for? What is the purpose? What is, what is the business plan? What is the return to the community on the investment? And how is that, how, if any, way is that achieved? I think that's important for everybody to at least hear everybody else out. And then as we go forward and we get towards the end of the listing period and we'll see how things shake out of there. It can't be said that we didn't listen to everybody or that there weren't. There may be that person that has that option out there that we haven't heard from. So, here's another opportunity. I fielded a lot of calls here lately from people asking questions. It's obvious to me, there's groups out there talking to people and trying to beat the ground. So, I'm appreciative of that. I think that helps. We're getting a lot of hits on the website. As they say, a lot of tire kickers, nobody asking for the keys. But we'll keep at it and I think this is something that is, should be included in the process as we move forward towards a goal.
You mentioned the live broadcast for this session, the city commission meetings, which have been wonderful. which have been wonderful. I had to catch one for our last meeting. It worked excellently. Do we plan to broadcast the town halls live?
Both of them, yeah.
Okay. But that said, and while it's great for viewers at home to be able to watch these, it's going to be hard for us to hear you from your living room, so please get in here for those as much as you can. We do need to hear your voices on both of these town halls.
And even if they can't make it, they could send a letter or send something in.
Email, correspondence.
Something, anything if you can't make it, but it's best to come in person.
Yeah, these are, both of these are very important topics for our community that we need to discuss and get out there in that type of forum, I believe.
Any other ideas, options, changes, suggestions, criticisms?
No, I think it's great. It's what's, it, it, it's what's needed, sorry.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, on to administrative reports. We first have the city attorneys report.
I'm good for this evening, thank you.
Okay. City manager report?
Uh, no report. I submitted a very short, six-page-only report. I'll work on lengthening that for some of our members.
We didn't notice it was only six pages.
I know.
I have, I have one quick question. With all the water work that we have done and are doing, I know we've talked about it a little bit, but at some point, should we be implementing a, either a procedure or codifying it into an ordinance, a requirement to do some type of valve exercising program, so we don't, so 10 years from now, we're not in the same shape that we're in now?
So that's a great question, and the answer to that is, that is in, in progress in terms of, once we get a number of these valves installed, is establishing an actual valve-turning program. And in addition, I'd like to, that, the plan will be have it be done internally, and then to hire a company that comes in and verifies the valve turning over a period of time here. It would be minimal, but in order to, to, you have, to expect, you have to inspect. You have to make sure that it's being done, and I, I want to be able to clarify that, but I've talked to Aaron about that. They realize the importance of it. They realize the first process is, is finding them all. The second process is digging them out. Do they work? Getting them changed out. I have a feeling we'll be putting in a lot of new valves on the other side of the river. But once we get that all done, yes, then an exercise program is definitely in order. And then before we start that, we'll want to change out the valves that are left-hand instead of right-hand, for whatever reason. I don't know if we got a deal on it. We bought some left-hand valves and didn't tell anybody, stuck them to the ground, so we're trying to fix that as well. So yes.
All right. And so that's the move for reports from department heads. We do have a few here tonight. Chief Langston.
Evening. Just kind of a proud morning of the fire department. We had MML, Michigan Municipal League, come through today. They were very impressed with our training records that we have, our lack of injuries that we have, and they give us a clean bill of health, excellent condition. He just commented several times on our training, because out of the 27 members we have every Tuesday night, we have 18 to 20 of them that show up to our trainings throughout the, and he says he doesn't see that in very many municipalities, fire departments, as a volunteer department. So kudos to the firefighters, the fire officers, and everybody else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance with Katie.
Just a couple things. We are pretty much through our pre-audit. They were here today for the last time for that part. So that's going well. We have till like the end of August to make any entries, and then we're closing the books. So June will be over. Everything's looking good. Everything's to the actuaries, except for the final numbers, which they were doing today for the pension and voluntary healthcare board, our accounts. And then lastly, just a reminder, summer tax bills are due September 2nd. So we have been getting, I know Carol's in the office too, a lot of people saying, you know, "I'm not getting my mail, I'm not getting my bills." Unfortunately, it's not just, it's not us. We truly believe it's a mail system issue. And lack of getting a bill doesn't mean your taxes are not due. So I encourage everybody to come in if you need to get a copy of a bill. We've had people call and ask if we charge. We're not going to charge you for a copy of your tax bill if you didn't get it. You can go online, we can tell you over the phone. Just encourage, contact us so that you know what you need to pay on time. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll move on then to commissioner privilege and the U.S. on reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
We have nothing for the planning commission, and hopefully we'll get people coming in and with the apartments and down there by the old Neymar Plaza, and see when they get started on that. But I just want to say, our DPW guys and everybody else has done a great job with the way they're doing the sewer and the water, and trying to get these roads done and covered back up. She just, when they put their flashes on, give them room. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Commissioner Bryson.
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner O'Brien.
I want to thank our city staff, who, some of them who aren't here, but for the, getting this live broadcast going. That really was helpful for me, being out, I was able to take notes and keep up with what was going on. I think it's really fantastic. I think it's a necessary part for modern government. I, I do worry, though, on the one end, that while you all can hear us, we may not hear you, and it's so important not just to watch, but also to come in and be heard at the podium. We need to hear you on these issues. It's very important, and it's the fastest, most effective ways of pressuring myself and my fellow commissioners to act in your interest, always is to be heard publicly. I also want to thank the DPW and the other members of the city staff, and Piper Zach and Co. and everyone working on the water situations we have going that's so multifaceted and multi-layered. These interlocal agreements to be able to keep things functioning right now, our neighbors in East China working with us. It's really critical that this keeps functioning and continues on, and I'm so impressed with the amount of work. We're not out of summer yet, but we're getting close, and that's going to bring its own challenges with us as we go forward. And so please continue to be patient, ask questions if you have them, but we're going to keep your water flowing as best as we can. Thanks.
Thank you. Hey, Commissioner Roarke.
I've heard from a couple of people about West Boulevard, that why is it taking so long? Because every time we fix something, something else goes wrong. So it's just taking them, they're doing the best that they can. So please be patient, and when it's done, it's going to be great. Shred Day is October 18th, Saturday, at the New Guy Community Center. You can see it on marinecity.gov, and there's some nice flyers out about it. And one other thing, in my neighborhood, I've noticed a lot of kids on recumbent bikes, those little, they lay down and they're pedaling around, and they're not paying attention to anything. And the people at the stop signs aren't paying attention to stop signs, so please be careful, watch out for the kids. They're really hard to see, and I know they're having fun, and I'm glad they're outside doing exercise and stuff, but please watch out for them. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendrick.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Now on to adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
And they're little kids, and they're little ones.
They should have flags on them.